Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, June 14th meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee meeting. We are at a reorganizational meeting tonight, which means we currently don't have a chair designated, so I, Superintendent, have the responsibility of calling the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV, as well as being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Not the case, and at this point, I'd like us to join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda tonight is the reorganization of the school committee, and so with that, I'd like to start by welcoming our two newest members, Bronwyn Monahan to my right and Ms. Ryan Kelly to my left. Welcome to both.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here with us. At this point, my simple task is to entertain motions for the position of chair. So are there any motions to nominate someone for the chair?
Karen.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Beth Baron as the chair.
Motion to nominate Beth Baron has been made. Any seconds?
Seconds.
Seconds?
No.
Okay. Are there any other nominations, any other motions to nominate anyone to be chair? All right. Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote, and Diane, does this have to be a roll call vote or simple, any idea?
Uh...
We'll make it a roll call vote, just in case.
Can we discuss for a second?
I'm sorry, yeah. Thank you.
I just want to say, I think Beth will be a great asset to the committee, and I think she'd be a great chair.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go for a roll call vote. You can signify your agreement by saying aye. We'll start with Bronwyn.
Aye.
Karen Moore, aye.
Melanie Rothstein, aye.
Stephanie Jasmine, aye.
All abstain.
Ryan Kelly, aye.
It is unanimous, so my job now is done, and we'll turn the meeting over to Beth, and congratulations.
Oh, thank you, and I have to officially move.
There's no gavel to turn over.
Okay. I'll just move my...
Wow, not really. It's habit.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. It's all yours.
Yeah, this is a little bit...
Do you have your Robert's Rule stuff?
Gosh, let me just get right down to business, I guess, and thank you. Thank you for nominating me, and I look forward to this year together on the committee. So I guess our next order of business is to entertain nominations for vice chair of the school committee. Oh, sorry. I've got to get used to this. Stephanie?
I'd like to nominate Karen Moore.
And I'll second.
Second? Discussion, questions?
I'll say the same. Karen will be a great asset to the committee as vice chair.
Okay, and I'll read the motion. I move that the school committee appoint Karen Moore as vice chair of the school committee for the 2018-2019 year, and we already had a second, so call for the vote, roll call vote?
Do we seek other nominations, Diane?
Oh, yes, we should. Yeah, yeah. Is anyone else interested in nominating? Did you have your hand up? No? Okay, if there's no further nominations or discussion or questions, we can call for the roll call vote, starting with Bronwyn.
Bronwyn Monahan, aye.
Abstain. Melanie Rothstein, aye.
Beth Baron, aye.
Stephanie Jasmine, aye.
Ryan Kelly, aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you, Karen, and musical chairs.
If I'm out last with Bronwyn. You could scoot down.
Yeah, you're welcome to move over, Bronwyn, if you want.
I'm going to get my coffee in a second.
I can help you.
Can you reach Karen's side or give her a mic?
is interested in becoming clerk for the upcoming 2018-2019 year.
Do you want to say a little bit about what the clerk is?
So the clerk will take their own minutes of the meeting. Diane will take the minutes, and Diane, you can correct me or add to this if you want. Maybe Melanie actually should probably talk about what she did it for the whole year, so it should really be her description.
Yeah, so Diane is with us 99% of the time. Sometimes she's not, but when she's with us, she takes wonderful, awesome notes. She puts it in the correct format of proper minutes, which I had no idea how to do that. So she would take the notes, but at the same time, I'm also listening, I'm taking notes. We would bounce some things off of each other, "Could you clarify this?" or whatever. So when she completes the minute, she would send them to me, and I would look over them, and we'd do some edits, you know, together. In Diane's absence, I would need to pay a little more attention, and then I would get the material sent off to Diane, and Diane, or whoever would be in her place, would put it in proper format, because there is, you know, a format. So, you know, it's basically, it occurs during the meeting, so you're here. It does require taking, you know, some notes so that you have a memory if you need to look back at something for reference. And then in terms of time, I mean, it's something you could probably do, you know, just in an hour, you know, an hour or less, in terms of editing what Diane sends to you when she gets them done. And we have basically a month as a guideline within which to approve minutes. So, I mean, we try not to wait a month, because then you forget everything, but, you know, the sooner that can be done, the better, but you do have those, you know, kind of time boundaries, so that's an explanation. Is anyone have questions or any desire?
Stephanie?
And I can say Diane might be able to speak to how it's changed, like some clerks have been different than others in terms of the amount that they've...
Yeah, I mean, certain clerks really go into the minutes and really rephrase and all of that, which is fine. It's your minute. So the clerk presents back to the school committee what they want as the minute, and then the school committee either approves them or may amend them, but it's your minute. So I'll get what I get down, and then if you want more detail, some clerks like that, some people don't. That's up to the clerk, and then the school committee as a whole to approve.
And they do come, right, they do come back to all of us, and prior to the meeting, we all have the responsibility to read and make our own edits as we see. So, you know.
And we should probably also add, outside of the minutes, the clerk's responsibility is to read the correspondence that's in the packet. You don't read the actual letters in their entirety, but you, as you'll see on your agenda, there's some bullet points of correspondence that comes in, and it is the clerk's responsibility to read what we've received.
Right, so number four on your agenda, I would normally read those, and then approval of minutes. So, yeah, that's the only additional, and I'm ready to pass on the baton. I mean, it's, you know, it just is what it is.
Anyone? We definitely need a clerk, so...
Yes? It's also a good position for, we're going to do some reorgs, so we're going to need to talk about subcommittees to divide up some of the work, but it's a good position to take if you have time constraints. So if it's, if you find that you're not going to be able to serve on a lot of subcommittees, it is something that you're going to be at the meeting anyway, so it's a good position to take if you have a time crunch for serving on other committees. That makes a difference in people's decision.
Well, we're really selling it. Should we circle back to that one? We could circle, well, I guess I could read the correspondence, or Melanie can read the correspondence, and then we'll circle back when we get to the reorganization later on the, and start talking about those jobs. So Melanie, with the correspondence.
We have an email, letter from Dr. Anna Jalinas, received on May 20, 2018, regarding the superintendent's evaluation. And next, we have a memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, dated June 1, 2018, regarding the student of the month for May 2018 at the LPVAC Career and Technical Educational Center. And that's the correspondence.
Thank you. And then for approval of the minutes, if anyone would like to go ahead and read the motion?
I'll just read it. I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the April 25, 2018 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
And we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed?
Okay. Couldn't tell.
Opposed or abstaining? None? Okay. And then our second recommended motion for additional minutes?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the May 23, 2018 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed or abstaining? Okay, probably, I'm not really sure, but maybe I should have called for discussion on that.
Yeah.
You're new, it's okay. Visitors' comments? We have none this evening. School committee announcements and recognitions? Anyone have anything? Okay.
Maybe I'll just say something.
Sure.
Seeing as Jess was not able to be with us tonight, and Russ and Michelle have said their goodbyes and their thank yous, I would like to publicly thank Jess for her many years of service, and I've learned a lot from her, and she has a plethora of knowledge and experience, and I miss my little buddy. So we wish her well.
Stephanie?
I echo those sentiments as well. Yeah, she's just going to be missed, and so are Russ and Michelle. On where do we go? Have a great committee, so I'm looking forward to the coming year.
Agree. Anything you want to add?
No, I agree.
I agree. I agree as well. All three thank them for their service, and they will be definitely missed, but I am looking forward to working with Bronwyn and Ryan and the direction the committee is heading. Business with guests? We do not have any this evening, and we'll move on to administrative reports, starting with the superintendent report.
Okay, a few items worth your attention. Starters, it's not in my written report, but I mentioned the graduation exercises this past Sunday, beautiful ceremony, and credit to the high school for creating a really a student-centered event. Really, the student speeches were outstanding, musical performances were outstanding, and it was a ceremony that was really well-received, really well-organized, so congratulations to Class of 2018 and all the parents, one of which, to my left, congratulations on a great graduation exercise, so. We also, meanwhile, a lot of other end-of-school activities. It's an incredibly busy time here in Long Meadow, field days, field trips, step-up ceremonies, graduation exercises, postseason tournaments here at the high school, so it's a really, really busy time. I'd like to give a sort of a special shout-out this year to Recycling Commission, the DPW, for working closely with the school staff, our custodial staff, to make sure that we're properly recycling all the paper and cardboard that our students generate throughout the year. It's a huge undertaking, but it's a great partnership. Long Meadow Educational Excellence Foundation, so we received notification that LEAF had distributed, awarded 30 grants to, over, to Long Meadow teachers, and these are little mini-grants that fuel enrichment and fuel innovative classroom experiences for kids, so we're super appreciative of LEAF and look forward to continuing our partnership with them. We had a senior citizen luncheon this past week, or this week, and I want to thank Karen for representing the school committee, and it was an incredible turnout by our seniors, probably 150 seniors, I'd say, and they were entertained by our lyrics ensemble and some other instrumentalists, and then they had a great experience with high school cafeteria food, and they were impressed with how far high school dining has come in their, in the years since they were in high school. There's a few other things in the written report that are sort of self-explanatory, I won't hit them, but I do want to mention our kindergarten enrollment, so we continue to monitor kindergarten enrollment and registration. We are particularly concerned about the center school kindergarten, and we're trending toward the need to add a fourth section at center school. So we, Ms. Maz and I, thought it would be great to pull together a finance subcommittee to take a look at the projections and any fiscal implications that that might have, so we'll continue to monitor that. Diane receives the K registrations along with Carla Zikowski, and they've been busy. It's a well-worn path to their offices lately, so seems to be a little bubble class that we're experiencing there, so we will keep you posted on that. And it occurred to me that the kindergarten class was the class of 2032, which was remarkable to think about. It seems like eons away, but all parents know that those years pass quickly, so. So that's it. Happy to, if you had any questions? Oh, and also, there's a bullet on your agenda, the K8 handbook is not an agenda tonight, but for our new members, Ryan and Bronwyn, I'd be happy to sit down with you and talk to you about where we are with that initiative, because I anticipate that it'll come before the committee at a meeting in the near future, so we'll spare you the details right now, but I'm happy to meet with you to talk to you about where we are with that document, so. That's all I got.
Okay.
I'll just, yeah. Do we happen to know when LEAF is this year? Does anyone know?
The LEAF Gala?
November.
Not sure.
Just from research.
Okay. And then just with the kindergarten numbers going up, I know we have in general a trend that's going down in enrollment, so I just wonder if, is there any information on what happened this year, or how the four-year-olds, the three-year-olds, two-year-olds look?
Yeah.
Just a curiosity question.
Tough to say. We don't know if it's going to be part of, if it's a blip, or if it's going to be part of a larger trend. I'm, you know, so I wouldn't even hazard a guess right now. Some of the enrollment reports that have been done for us by NASDAQ have showed a sort of continual modest downturn, but, so we don't know if this is a reversal of things.
Just of our senses, that we just don't know yet.
Maybe we could bring some, we do have some long-term enrollment projections that we could bring to the committee at a future date if it would be of interest, but we'll keep our eyes on that certainly.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, I obviously do not have a school committee chair report, and I don't believe Breggy is here tonight as our student representative, unless he submitted...
Breggy only wanted you to know that they have about 41 students who have expressed interest in going on the humanitarian trip to Puerto Rico that the school committee had tentatively approved a few months ago, so that's an exciting...
Yeah, it's a great number.
Exciting experience for the kids potentially, so we'll keep you posted on that.
Okay. And then other reports? I'm not sure, LPVAC, SEAL, or Food Services? Nothing?
I could give you a quick update on Food Service.
Sure.
We did have Cafe Services, our new provider was here on Tuesday, had a employee fair. I'd say, I think just about every employee that currently works in the district showed up. Most of them had already submitted an application online, which was good to see, so they answered questions, and will then be following up and going through the hiring process over the course of the next month or so. They were back on Wednesday and met with the administrative team during our admin team meeting. They were here for about a half hour, kind of talked a little bit about the vision and the changes that the program will be experiencing over the course of the next year, so I think it's a, we're off to a good start. Hopefully, we'll have a food service director designated for this district in the next same month or so.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone have any other further comments or questions in regards to the changeover? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to the subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee, since Russ and Michelle headed up that committee and they're not here, I will turn that over to you, Tom.
We haven't met, as Marty indicated, maybe after the reorganization, whoever ends up volunteering or getting appointed to serve on that committee. I mean, we could just talk briefly about scheduling time to meet, a couple end-of-year things, and I think as Marty indicated, looking at kindergarten section for center and what financial impact that would have.
Okay, that sounds good. Marty, did you have anything to add to Finance Sub?
No, that's it.
Okay.
No, thank you.
All right, sure. Any other comments or questions for Tom or Marty on that? Okay. None? We'll move on to Policy Subcommittee.
There are two policies that are in your packet for first read. The first one is the meal charging policy, EFDA, and it was changed to get rid of the account cap, where the students, when they reached a negative balance, would be offered a cheese sandwich or an alternative lunch, and we weren't practicing it, and we really didn't want to practice it because of the, first of all, they're charged the same as a regular lunch, and then the stigma, so we spoke about different ways of alerting families that the balance is zero or negative. So this was not an effective means, and it was too punitive, so we got rid of it off the policy. So you'll see that part X-ed out in red, and then the other policy that's in the packet is the graduation exercises, and this is for first read, but I noticed that it should say "school committee chair," not just "school committee," to request, I'm trying to pull it up here, to request, because if it's the school committee, we would have to convene a meeting, so if we can just add "chair," upon request, to the school committee chair. So that policy, for those who are listening at home, allows diplomas to be given by local elected officials who are holding office at the time of the graduation ceremony and representing Long Meadow, and they can give it to a family member upon request of the school committee chair. It also says in the policy that we had voted on last year about the graduating class wearing the single uniform graduation gown. And that's all.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, anything to direct a policy subcommittee on that? No? It's so quiet tonight. So we'll move on to ongoing business, and we need to, the first item there is the meeting schedule discussion. So the committee will discuss meeting days and times for the 2018-2019 school year, and hopefully, everybody has their calendar so we can go ahead. But as a point of information, this past school year, school committee met on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month, alternating the meeting times between evenings at 6:30 p.m. and 12 noon. So I will open that up for discussion or comments. Stephanie?
I'd be fine. I liked it on Wednesday. I don't know if that works for everyone, but Wednesday evenings, 6:30. I think we found that the day was difficult, and then people holding jobs, but it was difficult to keep it in the window that we tried to.
Okay, go ahead, Karen.
Just, Diane, do you know LPVAC's schedule? Because if we're not going to be alternating day and time this year, then we may have to move it...
Their meetings are on Wednesday.
Wednesday night.
So that is, and it's usually the, well, you've got the calendar, I left them at your place.
Oh, sure. So we would either have to alternate the weeks with them, or change it to either...
How many overlap do we have? So it looks, real quick, looking at this, it would probably be a problem in November, April, February.
Okay.
There's three months that, looking quickly, that I'm catching.
Do we want to move it to Tuesdays?
I didn't, just, I did speak with LCTV. They like evenings, because they're going to be teaching courses during the year, school year, so they were voting for evening.
Oh, okay.
Just so you know. And then they're open to whatever evening you said, so just so you know what LCTV's schedule is.
Who's here on Tuesday? Oh, wait. No, they're here on Mondays.
Monday?
Mondays.
Select for year is here first and third Mondays in the month, and we used to be years ago, second, fourth Mondays of the month, and then we've moved.
I would just recommend not being at the beginning of the week, is my personal thought. I mean, Tuesdays, but not Mondays.
Yeah, Tuesdays, okay. If you have a long weekend, it kind of stinks. Thursday's kind of near the end, which, so I think you're only Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm hearing Tuesday as opposed to trying to shuffle the LPVAC on Wednesdays. Does anyone else have any feedback as far as what night works?
Days on Thursdays would be problems for me, so I'm a fan of Tuesday evenings. That'd be good.
Tuesday? As opposed to, what about Wednesdays?
No, Wednesday would be, Thursday's the only evening that would be problematic.
Can we alternate it with LPVAC or no, as our schedule?
What were you looking at, Diane, every second and fourth?
It's a, a school committee customarily meets the second and fourth week of the month.
I mean, we could change it. And LPVAC is... The LPVs, is the, they're all over the place.
Extra LPVAC calendar.
Board meeting.
So November? I don't see, oh, I see, yeah, okay.
Their board meetings seem to fall, they're inconsistent, they're first, second, third, fourth, they're all over the, so it's kind of hard to build around that.
They mix it up when there's school vacations.
Oh, yeah, so we can really, if you do it first and...
Well, does Tuesday work?
Well, and, yeah, we can avoid the Wednesday altogether if we're in agreement with a Tuesday evening meeting, if that works. Does anyone have any further discussion or anything to add to the Tuesday?
I don't think so. You just have to think about the long weekends, things don't get mixed up.
No, Tuesdays would be fine on a long weekend.
Yeah, okay. It's just trash pickup that's altered.
Since we live on the same street, I second that.
And not every single time.
So do we need a motion?
I think you should, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to schedule our 2018-2019 school committee meetings for the second and fourth Tuesday of every month at 6:30 p.m. Is that right?
Yep. Now, here's a question. You currently have on this calendar, one more meeting scheduled for June 27th, which also happens to be an LPVAC meeting that night. which also happens to be an LPV EC meeting, um, that night. And it's their voting meeting.
Right.
So you, I don't know if you want to move that one into the 26th. It's something to think about. That's...
Probably could.
That's until we...
Yeah, because they're voting officers that night. They have a quorum without us, um, but, um...
I was being asked earlier today by Phyllis, so I figured I'd throw it out there.
Okay, so...
Change it to Tuesday.
Yeah, that would be the 26th. And there is a, it looks like Russ had told us there's a task force meeting, but I think that's at four. Is that right?
Usually late afternoon, yeah.
So we have a motion on the 2018-2019 schedule for the Tuesday. Should we go ahead and get a second on that and then make a second motion on moving the LPV EC from that, um, 27th date to the 26th? So I don't know, Karen, if you want to reread that motion or just anyone to second?
Do you have the motion, Diane?
I'm finishing it.
Okay.
Ms. Moore, move to schedule the School Committee meetings on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at 6:30 PM.
I'll second. So we'll...
Who's seconding?
I'll second that. And all those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. So we're all set with that. And then if anyone would like to go ahead and, um, create a second motion to take care of our last regularly scheduled meeting, to move it from the Wednesday night as to not conflict with the LPV EC meeting?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to...
Can I just ask that real quick? Would you not be able to do Thursday that week? Is it Thursday, like, freestanding with school being out?
Which Thursday?
Instead of the 20, um, 28th, instead of the 20...
No, that's fine.
Do you need that, Melanie?
I, I may be away. That's my only concern. I, I, I could push it to, I mean, I could come back. But now you're pushing me up, like, taking more of my...
That is correct.
Down, down, don't we have any? Do you know what I mean? It would help me to gain a day the other way, to more ensure that I would be here.
It, it might be that we have negotiations that night.
That's right, too.
That was, that was, there were two nights.
Actually, the 26th is going to be negotiations as well.
Uh, the 26th, they had said that they could not do the 26th. The 28th is, is the date that the LEA identified to do some negotiations and when our attorney is available, so.
Okay, so that lines out?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Um, that would limit, um, we would not, Marty and I would not be available for that meeting.
Unless you started later, but, yeah.
What time does you meet for that? And is it like, anticipating?
Yeah, you know, we were going to start potentially at around 3:30 on the 28th, so, um, it's possible you could, you could start a School Committee meeting at seven. It'd be a lot to stack up, but it's up to you guys.
I'm open to discussing that. So I guess our two options would be Tuesday, the 26th. And Melanie, um, you can speak to, you've spoken to that, or we could, um, push for a later start time on Thursday evening. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have an opinion about either one. I'm fine with whatever the committee wants to decide. So I'll open that up for discussion if, if anyone prefers one over the other. Melanie, you would prefer the, the Thursday late?
Well, I would prefer.
Yeah.
You know, it just, we, we happen to make some changes that...
And Ryan, you said that one week, that you could do Thursday?
I don't think I'd be able to attend either, because we're going to be away.
Okay.
Okay, so, well, we would still have a quorum, even if Melanie couldn't come in, Bronwyn couldn't come in.
On...
On Tuesday, we would have four of us present?
They're both tough for me, but, um, yes.
It's a time in here.
I know, it's hard to...
Yeah.
Well, you'd have five, you'd have five on either day. If she can't do Thursday, did you say Thursday? You couldn't do it Tuesday.
She couldn't do either one.
Neither Tuesday nor Thursday. Okay.
Or just leave it on Wednesday and you don't go to LPVs.
I don't know how you feel about that if they're voting.
Well, I mean, just do what works best for the group. I mean, if I can't be here, I can't be here.
All right.
Yeah.
And, and both are hard for me, so I would say, Mel, like, you're having to change your plans. Let's go with the one.
Why don't we just keep it?
Oh, you want to keep it Wednesday?
Oh, is that what you said?
I know, I was saying, let's move it to Thursday, then she doesn't have to, because both of them are kind of, are, are difficult for me, so.
Okay. No, I thought you meant that you'd prefer Wednesday then, since both Tuesday and Thursday were difficult.
If you guys are okay with negotiation, you can, it can be covered off a long meeting, so as long as you're okay with that.
I don't, I don't mind. If I'm here for something, I don't mind staying the course and, and finishing out the night, if that's what works best for the group. So I'm okay with Thursday if Marty's okay with that long day.
Are you in here for negotiations or are you in the other room?
We haven't set that up yet, but we, we could be in the other room for negotiations.
Okay, because this room would have to set up for School Committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The other room would be plenty big for negotiations, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely have a quorum. Melanie would be there, you'd be there, and I'd be there, if I can.
Yeah, we would still have a forum without two. Okay, so Karen, did you want to re-craft that?
Did I make a motion?
Motion? Did, or did we not have a motion yet on that switching?
We didn't have...
Okay, so did you want to go ahead?
Sure.
Thank you.
I make a motion to change our June 27th School Committee to Thursday, June 28th at 7:00 PM. Is that right?
I'll second. Any further discussion or questions? If not, we'll just call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and move that to the, um, Thursday evening meeting. Thank you, Diane. And then we'll go ahead and move on to the new business. The first item on that agenda is the school nurse. So I'll just read, um, School Committees, according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 53, appoint school nurses. Long Meadow High School Principal has conducted a search and recommended to the Superintendent, Dr. O'Shea, the following candidate for hire as the school nurse at Long Meadow High School.
So the candidate's name is, uh, Mary O'Neill. Uh, Mary is a 2016 graduate of the UNL. She has a, she's a PSN. And, uh, though she has only been out of school for a few years, she's packed a lot of experiences into her time as a student and as a practicing nurse. Uh, most recently, she was the head nurse at the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School and, uh, has also spent time in Mercy Medical Center in their oncology, uh, unit and also has been working as an EMT in the Town South Adley. So, uh, we're excited to bring her forward and, um, seek your endorsement of Mary O'Neill, School Nurse for Long Meadow High School. Uh, she would be replacing Charlotte Steele, who, uh, has been a, uh, nurse at Long Meadow, Ohio for decades and 30, 30 some odd years?
30 years.
Yeah, so, uh, she'll be greatly missed, but, uh, Mary seems up to the challenge.
Do we make a motion?
Um, any, go ahead and make the motion and then...
I move on the recommendation of the Superintendent that the School Committee appoint Ms. Mary O'Neill as school nurse for Long Meadow High School, beginning for the 2018-2019 school year. Ms. O'Neill will be employed under the Long Meadow Education Agreement, Unit C agreement.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
I just have a few questions. So you answered one. You said that it didn't state what kind of nursing that she had done at Mercy. So you said she was oncology?
I think she was in a few different units, but I remember she, she was telling me that she was in an oncology unit.
And this Chinese Immersion Charter School, do we know what grades and...
It's a K-12 school, and so she's, she's eager to work. She feels like her comfort zone is with older students. So she's anxious to work in a high school.
Any further discussion or comments? Questions for Marty? Okay, then we'll go ahead and, um, call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, so that has passed and we will move on to discussion of School Committee assignments. The fun part of the evening. So in your, um, School Committee packets, you're provided with some information on the Subcommittee assignments and roles, um, that the School Committee fills. The School Committee will need to appoint, well, we won't get into that, but, um, yeah. But were there any comments or questions on the information in the packet or questions about the roles or responsibilities for some of those committees?
Just for your information, um, Melanie had also put together sort of a summary document, kind of a bridge version of the Subcommittee list and descriptions. So if that's helpful to you, I think that was at your seats when you came in.
Yeah, just so you can see it all kind of on one page. You can get a, an overall glimpse of what, uh, what we need to do and what we need to accomplish. Um, and then you can use the other pages for reference on, um, descriptions and so forth. But this way, rather than like flipping through three pages, you can kind of get an idea of what we need to fulfill in one outline.
Yes, thank you, Melanie, for putting that together. It, it is a really helpful document. I think, just to start before we get into the, um, actual committee breakdowns, I think, um, as a learning experience, I think what may be moving forward, what we would like to do is kind of, um, alter the veteran School Committee members with the new members on each committee coming in, so that when we have, um, election cycles where we have turnover, we're not left with a committee that has all new people on it or all of the, um, people have left in one election year and we have, that way there's some continuity and, um, the people who served on the committee the year before are able to bring new members up to speed. So I think that will give us some kind of balance, um, moving forward. And it, as, as much as we can make transitions as seamless as possible, I think that works in our best interest as a committee. So I just wanted to lead with that.
Then I'll just add that we also streamline, so, you know, where we might have had, you know, four Subcommittee's, we've narrowed it down to three and we've taken some things and mixed them in. So we should hopefully have less that we have to cover, or we've grouped it, excuse me, um, so that we're not all stretched so thin, because they're just, were just numerous. And even here, you'll see at the bottom, we have discussion about even discontinuing two more, or at least a, a discussion on, um, just so you have a little background information on that.
And as we go through each committee, you can, um, you know, we can open the discussion as far as, um, the length of time required or if there's any concern about when it would meet, because everyone will, will be on, everyone will be on something by the end of the evening. Um, so I guess without, um, if there are no more questions about the general comments, we can just go ahead according to the agenda and get started with, um, the, um, the easier part of the, the committee roles. So School Committee needs to appoint a member to sign the bi-weekly payroll warrants and the accounts payable warrants. School Committee is allowed, under the Municipal Modernization Act, to designate one of its members to review and approve the warrants. MASC suggests appointing a backup person in case of a conflict of interest, and that would be, um, the appointed person receives a reimbursement on that particular warrant or you're simply unavailable. And Tom, I think if there's anything to add, you're pretty good at describing what that job entails.
Um, so every other week, there is a batch of invoices that get processed for payment to vendors, uh, reimbursement to employees that, uh, historically the School Committee would approve at their meetings. Under the act, I think it was 2016, it allowed for one member to review and authorize, and then at the next subsequent School Committee meeting, the, uh, journal of the payments will be included for, uh, reference for all the members to see. Beth has been our, uh, School Committee member this year. What would you say, Beth, maybe anywhere from a half hour to 45 minutes every other week, depending upon?
Yeah, depending on the time of year.
Yeah.
Typically, August, when you have a lot of ordering, your warrants are going to be, you know, a stack and you'll spend more time than there's time when there's less invoices and you can spend less time on them. But, yeah, that's a good estimation. And every other week.
Yeah, and they are throughout the summer. We do have them, especially in the first couple of weeks of July. I would say they're almost every week for the first three weeks or so as we're closing FY18 and beginning FY19's accounts payable process.
Correct. And I, I will add that, um, the Business Office is phenomenal to work with as far as getting you, they'll notify you either via text or email when the warrants are ready. And typically, um, Karen and the Business Office will have them ready by Friday and you can come in on Monday. And it's a pretty flexible position. It needs to be done during business hours, but you can make it your own, like, you can come in at 10 or 3, whatever works for your availability. And depending on the time, um, you know, you would be in there and just sign off on it. And it, they're really good to work with.
I'm happy to volunteer for that, if that's, if I can volunteer, if you're looking for...
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. We're not going to say no to any volunteers tonight for anything.
But is that something that the same person can do, since someone's in here signing one thing, or payroll, I mean?
I, I can do, continue with payroll.
Okay, okay.
I just need a backup for the summer.
Yeah, I think the way that it worked last year, and I found this to be really helpful, is Karen served as a backup to both the payroll and the warrant person. And, I mean, I think I needed you maybe three or four times, um, depending on my schedule. So if the, if somebody could volunteer to be the backup, you could be the backup potentially for both positions. Or you can back each other up, however you want to.
Tom, was there an issue with the backup on the payroll?
I don't know. Did we ever have to have a backup? I don't think we did.
I don't think I ever came in to do payroll. I think...
Yeah, I don't think the law authorized a backup for the payroll like it does for the count payable. You know, it does for the count payable.
We did, we voted me as backup last year, so I don't know.
But I do remember there being discussion about whether...
Maybe somebody's not getting paid.
It wasn't an issue. I don't know that they'll ever really make a big issue. So long as somebody's authorized, I think, by the committee to sign on their behalf, I think is what they would be looking for.
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, we did it in case it would be needed and then we didn't need it, so.
But I won't, I will have time in the summer when I, when the payroll is due. But, um, last year I squeezed it in. I thought it was going to be gone, but I squeezed in when the payroll was ready. So I think you have to have a backup because...
Or appoint somebody for the summer months when you're not available and then change the appointment.
But then we'd have to do it here.
You would.
And it's payroll on a certain day. I mean, people need their checks. There's less flexibility with that.
Payroll actually is a little more flexible, because the town will issue the checks. Not, they won't hold it pending the authorization on the sheets.
Okay.
But the timeframe stays consistent throughout the year. It's every two weeks.
Yeah, but that's okay. That part's okay.
I'll back them both up. Do you want to have a different person?
Thanks, Ryan. That'd be great. That works.
So I, yeah, I can talk about...
And that does need to be done during business hours. You're good, Ryan? That's, okay, good.
So if anyone would, or I can just go ahead and read the recommended motion then. I move that the School Committee designate Melanie Rothstein to review and approve the warrants and to appoint Ryan Kelly as her backup.
Second.
Any further discussion or comments on that? If none, we'll just call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, so that motion passes. The second recommended motion, I move that the School Committee authorize Stephanie Jasmine and I'll just add, and appoint Ryan Kelly as her backup to sign payroll sheets for FY2019.
Second.
Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, um, we'll just call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. So thank you for volunteering to get that done. That is appreciated. The School Committee is required to vote on who the representatives are for the Lower Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative. Enclosed is the calendar of meetings. Enclosed is the calendar of meetings for next school year. The Board of Governors Corporation will meet at 6:00 PM, and the Board of Directors, the collaborative, meets at 6:30. School Committee will appoint our representatives by way of a vote." I'll give you a chance to look at the calendar. And Karen?
Do you want me to give a little description of what the?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so I was the LPVEC Corporation member, and basically it's two to three meetings a year. They meet as necessary, because they hold the money and then transfer the money to the collaborative. So, it's, it's less of a policy piece and more of a, if they're going to do any kind of, if they're doing construction, if they're looking to buy new buildings, if, you have to be there for their audit. And the meetings are pretty efficient. It's nighttime meetings and they're no more than an hour, and like I said, two to three times, or as needed. That's the corporate piece.
And where do they typically hold?
Oh, they hold it at, at the, at LPVEC, which is in West Springfield.
So, one other thing, so looking at the calendar, is this time just reserved in the event they need a meeting? And, because you're saying there's only two or three and there's.
So, what you're looking at is the collaborative. The collaborative meets more. The corporation only meets a few times a year.
So, it's not color-coded?
So, there's the board and then there's the corporation. So I was on the board, and that meets more.
Okay, but they have one every month for both? That's.
Those are just the.
What am I missing?
Those are the board meetings, and then the others would be the superintendent's meetings, which you can ignore.
Oh, okay.
They don't have the corporation on there.
So they don't even have a corporation on there? I assume one was corporation and one was.
Corporation is strictly as needed, so usually Phyllis will.
So that's the green one?
Green is the board.
Right. So usually Phyllis will send you an email a couple of weeks in advance and say, "We're looking to schedule a meeting. How many people can attend?" So they make sure they have a quorum.
And it can't be the same person, is that correct?
It cannot be the same person.
So we need two representatives?
Right.
And so the board meets once a month, and then Phyllis will send the agenda by email. The meetings are, I'd say, an hour and a half at the most, and it really, a lot of it has to do with their budget. But they're pretty, they're efficient meetings, but you have to be able to meet in the evenings when they hold them. And then sometimes they'll ask you to sign the warrants and then email them back to them.
I'll be on the board. You'll be on the board?
Sure.
Okay.
Who was on the board?
I was.
You were board?
Yeah.
But that's pretty much once a, once a month?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so you, you're board, not corporate, right? You know the difference? Okay. I'm still figuring it out.
Okay. So Bronwyn, you're volunteering for the collaborative, not the corporation?
The board.
The board one.
Yeah.
The green meeting.
Okay. Just want to make sure I fill in the motion correctly. And do we have any other volunteers for the corporation? Those would be the two to three meetings. Correct?
Both of them.
Ryan, you'll take the.
Sure.
Excellent, thank you. And Karen and Stephanie, did you typically have alternates? Would you be voted alternate for that?
I feel like at one point they did, but I don't, I don't think we did.
We did. We had them last year, and I think it was.
Oh, did we?
Yeah.
Okay, so you just switched.
So if you were on the collaborative, Karen was your backup and vice versa.
I remember that.
So I guess I would leave that to Bronwyn and Ryan to decide if they'd like to be each other's backup, if that's fine.
I don't know if you can be a backup and be on the corporation and go to the board. I don't think you can.
Oh, okay, so.
I could be the backup for the corporation, since I did it.
Okay.
Last year, I'll be Ryan's backup.
Okay, that sounds good. So you know where that's taking us, Stephanie?
Where are we at?
Karen, Karen set that up nicely for you to be the backup for Bronwyn.
Oh.
No, I'll open it up to whoever wants to be the alternate.
I'll be.
Anyone?
I don't know if I ever saw them have a backup there.
Can you just say, "I can't make it, can somebody else make it that night for that meeting?" We have to have a backup. It has to be that person, it has to be that person show up.
Yeah. It's got to be voted.
I would, I never heard, do other ones have a backup? Because it was always an email, "Can we make a quorum?" And then if you couldn't make a quorum, then, I mean, they always made a quorum, but it was never, "Are you going to have a backup, Philly?"
Well, if you don't want a backup, then don't vote one, so.
I would only do it if we have.
If you have to have a backup. If you can't make the meeting, you can't make the meeting.
Okay.
I think so. I mean, that's why, I didn't know I had a backup, so.
You know what, just for consistency's purpose, then I'll just fill in and be the backup. Can I be the backup for the, just so we have one for each, and if we never need it, we never need it, but at least we have one.
Hopefully not.
In case. And that way we have consistency between the two. So does anyone want to read the first motion on the corporation?
"I move that the school committee appoint Ryan Kelly to be the school committee representative and Karen Moran to be his alternative to the Lower Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative Board of Governors Corporation."
Second. Any further discussion or comments on that? So we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? If not, we'll move to the second motion.
"I move that the school committee appoint Bronwyn Monahan to be the school committee representative and Elizabeth Barron to be her alternative to the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative Board of Directors Collaborative."
Okay, any further discussion or comments on, oh, sorry, second.
Second. Got the second, okay.
I jumped the gun on that one, sorry.
None more.
Any further comments or questions on that? If there are none, we'll just call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? If none, thank you so much for everyone who made that as painless as possible. And then, we would need to go move into the subcommittee discussions. So I think the easiest way to do it is just to move down the list. It's Agenda Item Number 12. We'll list the different committees. And we can start with Finance Sub. Stephanie?
I'll go on Finance.
I'd like to go on Finance.
So Ryan?
Yes.
And can I?
Yes, Stephanie.
I would, it would be my recommendation that you as Chair also join Finance, just because of the budget. I think it would be helpful.
Right, and seeing that Michelle and Russ as Chair and Co-Chair served on that last year, and it would be helpful. So I will, I will volunteer myself, I guess, but thank you for, thank you for doing that for me. And that leaves us with a good balance. So, is this all going to really go as easy as this first one? Let's keep, let's keep moving while we're on a roll. So we'll keep.
Can I just, a quick clarification?
Add on that?
So, when Karen, Beth and I met to set the agenda, we took the liberty of adding capital under Finance Sub, so I just want to make sure you're all knowledgeable and comfortable with that, this, this sort of folding that into Finance Sub. Is that?
It makes sense.
Makes sense.
When people suffer from that, you have three now.
Yep. And I think that having three members is a, is a good look.
Yes, thank you for adding that. And capital will be any of our projects in the district that we prioritize. And it all ties into Finance. And Tom, if you had anything to add, I guess, on Finance?
No, I look forward to having you guys sometime next week.
Yeah. And Tom needs to give them a great resource, I'll say that.
Thank you.
Be happy to be on any of these committees. Except Finance.
Tom, you want to join Policy?
I think I'm busy with Finance.
In terms of meeting times, you're going to leave it to the individual committee members to figure that out?
Yeah, I think now that we've established, the three of us will coordinate and talk to Diane about, and Tom, in getting it on the schedule, because we'll need to get one on the books.
Typically, you met before the school committee meeting, was it?
Like late afternoon?
Yeah, we were kind of all over the place. There were a number of our meetings were at noon time, then some were at four or five, so.
Wait, on the eve, night of the evening?
Of school committee. The only problem with that is it's tough to get things on the agenda, not knowing what Action Finance Sub will take, so we try to do it on the off weeks. But, we can talk.
Okay.
Okay, so generally between the noon and four, and just knowing that as we move into budget season, those meetings will ramp up over the winter, right? Okay, so thank you all for volunteering for that. That sounds great. We'll move on to Policy Sub. Karen, do you want to talk about Policy, or volunteer yourself to continue on Policy?
I will do both, if you'd like. I will volunteer myself to be on Policy Sub again, but for the new members, Policy Sub is, we have a huge policy manual, and we sort of, at the beginning of the year, we were just trying to tackle the big policies that needed to be addressed and hadn't been addressed in several years. Things that, you know, may be hot-ticket items like social media policy, bullying, things like that. And then, as the year progressed, things may have come up to, you know, issues may have come up to Marty, and so Marty would then come to the Policy Committee and say, you know, "Can we put this on the agenda, because it's, you know, an issue that's, that's come in front of us?" So it's, we try to tackle the policies one at a time, but there are a lot, and there's only so many you can get through, and it's, you know, you do what you can, so.
And I'll just add, and something, our policy has not been very active. You know, I think it varies from year to year, or can also depend on how much work you want to put into it. And, you know, we had high hopes to start in the beginning, like she said, and tackle some important ones, and then some things came completely out of the blue. So we had to deal with those as well, but I'm happy to join you again on Policy.
And no, I'm not volunteering, but I will just, just because I jumped over to Finance, but the policy manual, as Karen and Melanie know, needs revisions. So we had entertained the idea of having MASC help us with that. It didn't seem like, one, it was a cost to have them help, and it, two, it didn't seem like it would really, the benefit was really unknown, and I think that's still up in the air, so we thought we would go the year and see how it went, and then maybe revisit that. So, that's always there, too.
Well, thank you, thank you for your comments, but also thank you Karen and Melanie for continuing your roles there. I will add that as a school committee, that I feel like that's the biggest responsibility we're charged with. We are a policymaking body, and that is, if not our largest responsibility. I do feel it's one of our most important subcommittees.
I also say, it would be, you'll want three people on that, because you will have a quorum if somebody can't get there, if you have two, but if you have only two people, you both have to be able to meet. So would, and it's a, it's a big subcommittee, so you definitely want three. And it would be beneficial to have, I know we're going to be looking at having somebody else on the committee in the future, but it would be beneficial to have somebody new on that, too, so they can see how it works.
I totally agree with you. I think that's definitely the meter.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
So the LPVEC board meetings are Wednesdays, but also it says the Policy Subcommittee meets on Wednesdays.
They typically, they typically would meet in the afternoon. Correct? Or in the morning?
It'll be.
It will be in the evening, but you can decide, I think, right?
You don't have to have set dates? You can just come up with a date, you know, a couple of weeks ahead of time?
They meet on Wednesdays this year.
Yeah.
But you can set your own.
That works for us to just get in the calendar every other Wednesday, but that doesn't have to be that way. But generally, it is during the day, because oftentimes you're pulling in Tom Landers, or you're pulling in the athletic director, or just some other resource. So, so we do hold those meetings during the day typically.
I'd be interested in the Policy.
Okay, great. Bronwyn, I think you would be, you would do a really great job with that subcommittee.
Oh, thanks.
And that gives us a nice balance with a mix of the older and newer members, so we can really keep that consistent. So thank you for everyone who's volunteered so far. We'll move on to Evaluation Subcommittee.
Can I, you want me to?
Yeah, if you want to go ahead and take that one.
So, I'm excited that this is a subcommittee that's under consideration for the committee. I think the, I'm familiar with working with evaluation subcommittees, and it's a, it's a typical practice for districts to have the evaluation subcommittees, and the specific responsibilities could be defined as that committee gets up and running, but to have a committee that establishes a timeline, reviews and provides feedback on the development of the annual plan, and provides some ongoing feedback, formative feedback throughout the year, I think that's a really powerful way to conduct an evaluation. So, this is a, I don't know if Longmont has ever had an evaluation subcommittee, if this is a new, so it's a new undertaking, but if we're, if we're able to pull it off, I think it would be a really effective way to lead the evaluation of the superintendent.
Karen?
And Marty, are you looking for three people on that committee, do you think?
I think it's up to the committee. I think, you know, three's always a good number for the reasons that Stephanie identified, you know, in terms of establishing quorums, and, you know, the more feedback, the better, I suppose, but, and of course, Patty Grannier, who's here tonight, can be a resource to the committee in terms of how that might function as well, so.
I'd be interested in that.
So would I.
Okay, so we have Bronwyn, Ryan, and we'd like a third.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I think that the next person, ideally for me, it would have been good to have the Chair and the, and the Vice Chair and a new person on it, but maybe, I don't know how it will work with two new people versus two older. I mean, it would be my preference, and I don't know what Marty has to say, or, but it would be my preference to have it, if you're going to have three people, have two, and for me, it would be the Chair and the Vice Chair, and then one new person makes sense to me, but, because it's coming in to a, it's, you know, it's a subcommittee, it will be discussed in the larger committee, but it's coming into a lot, I don't know. That made the most sense to me, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
The Chair has to.
Okay.
The Chair has to.
Okay.
The Chair has to, the subcommittee by this, by vote, eval.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations, Beth.
Yeah. I mean, it would be my.
No, no, thank you for that input. That's good to, no, thank you.
I think it makes the most sense to have the Chair, but if we, you know, and you can, whatever you want, but to me, thinking about it, and I'm taking myself out of it, because I'm not on it, but having the Chair and the Vice Chair and a new person makes, so then you have someone who's new and will come to the table, and then.
Yes, any other further discussion on that?
I agree with Stephanie on that one.
I think it makes sense, when you talked about it earlier, about the committees that have existed before, and having some sort of previous knowledge, but didn't you start this by saying that this is brand-new for Longmont? We haven't had one before? So there is no previous knowledge on how that particular subcommittee would work?
Except that the eval is based on.
The previous.
The previous.
Yeah. It's the subject matter that makes it different.
Right.
Not that it's new. That's my opinion.
Yeah, we wouldn't have the, the, the subcommittee, the subcommittee was designed out of, you know, what occurred last year, so that's why. I'd do four, but you can't do four.
Right.
Because then you have a quorum.
And, I mean, for the sake of consistency with the, I view these as the, the three strongest subcommittees, and we, we are setting kind of a pattern with two older members, one newer member. I'm not a, the Vice Chair is fine as a second member, but I would open it up, I know Stephanie, you just said you weren't interested, but I'd open it up to Melanie.
I'd be happy to, if it's something that you didn't feel like the two of you would be in better positions to do, or whatever that means.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure, Bronwyn.
So I.
So I realize it's a, it's a new committee, but are you saying you have to have like prior knowledge, so to speak, or is it like moving forward or, you know what I mean? Like what Ryan was, what Ryan was alluding to, if it's a new committee, having two new people would seem okay to me if it's new this year. But if it's like based on previous knowledge that Ryan and I don't have, I, I just was wondering about that.
I think we need.
Karen?
Uh, sorry. My understanding that this, that this subcommittee would, also a piece of it would be an improvement plan? Is that, is that a correct understanding of what this committee would entail?
I thought, but I will ask Marty.
Well, given the rating, I suppose that it would be, that would be the natural next step, yeah.
Okay, so can I?
That was ever voted on or anything, but it seems to me that would be the logical next step.
That would be a piece of it?
Yeah.
Okay, so there would be a bit of prior knowledge that would be part of this. Marty, do you mind me asking your opinion on this?
But it's tough on the way in and I'm flexible. I mean, I think at the end of the day, the full committee, you know, is charged with approving or disapproving, reviewing the work of subcommittees. And so, you know, we'll, I'm excited that it's a, that the committee's interested in pulling this together because I think it'll kinda help with ongoing communication. So how it shakes out, I guess I, I'm flexible.
Okay. Stephanie?
I think what might be throwing us, I realize, is that it's called an evaluation subcommittee and it's not a subcommittee to evaluate Marty by any means. It is really a subcommittee to have discussions with, is my understanding. To have discussions with Marty and with Patty to help us move forward. So it's not a subcommittee that's going to be evaluating him. That's something that's done at the committee level. It's really a bridge to, to have communication. I, it is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, with Marty and the mentor in making this process effective and move forward and having communication between the committee and Marty outside of a larger group. So it's not a matter of the subcommittee evaluating Marty. That would, that, that's not done at a subcommittee level. So I see it more as the communication. Am I, I think, I didn't come up with a subcommittee, so I'm not really sure.
I think that's a piece of it, but I, I'm, I'm looking at it as more of a, a timeline to, you know, do like a mid-cycle review type of thing and keep on track so that we're moving forward towards the spring evaluation and kind of like a check-in. We would, but, but pulling in pieces from, you know, things that we're working, working on and working towards. So that's my understanding of it. I don't know.
Wow, and it's new for me, too. And we're all trying to figure out, but it looks like it has a lot of different moving pieces. I think there are a number of purposes to it. But in part, you know, we were the ones that were here last year and wrote the evaluation, worked through the year with Marty, have all met and discussed and put together plans and moving forward, you know, with Patty. To me, it, it just doesn't make as much sense to have two new people on who didn't have any of those experiences last year to be setting the pace and moving forward on a self-improvement plan, who, I don't know. That, to me, it just doesn't make as much sense to me. That's, that's my opinion.
Right. Okay, Stephanie?
Can we get some clarif-, now I'm just confused because I, I guess I need some clarification on what the evaluation subcommittee is, because I just thought it was a bridge between. So now I just don't know.
So I think it's, it's handled differently in different communities. So, and it could be something that you'll want to perhaps table and, and sorta come back. So maybe the first thing that you might want to do is to define the duties of that committee. And from that, you might be in a position to decide who's on that subcommittee. So in some communities, the evaluation subcommittee is simply, does the task that Beth describes, keep everything on track. You do the, the formative feedback, the mid-cycle review. And then sometimes the evaluation subcommittee will compile the, the individual evaluation from individual members and develop a composite recommendation to the full committee. But again, at the end of the day, like any subcommittee, the full committee oversees and ultimately approves anything that comes out of any subcommittee. So, you know, same with finance, subcommittee, policy, subcommittee. There's really, subcommittees in and of themselves have no authority to set direction or make decisions, because all those things have to come before the entire committee. So you may wanna, a thought would be to sorta come up with a, a list of potential duties and then approve that and then make a decision about who's on that committee. So, and it's not, it's, there are other committees on this list that maybe you don't even have to figure out tonight. I think you've figured out most of the important sort of timely ones. This might be one that you have some time for, so that's a thought.
Karen?
I just wanna weigh in on the value of having two of the more senior members and one newer member in that, just as a new member last year, the evaluation tool itself is very cumbersome and it, it took a lot of time to sit down and learn. And so the, the, the more veteran members would have an understanding of that tool itself and I think be able to provide more meaningful feedback in the beginning. Because I think just going through the process of actually evaluating a superintendent, you learn so much. And then after that year of learning, I think that you understand the tool, understand what you're looking for. Even, even just thinking back as to when I sat with Marty to talk about his annual plan, I think this year would be a very different conversation than it was last year because I just was, I didn't know as much of what I was looking at or what I was looking for. So I think it, I think it would be valuable to have two more veteran members personally.
And Stephanie?
I still am not clear about what the subcommittee is about. So it's new. I don't know who developed it. And now I'm hearing it is about Marty's evaluation. So now I really don't know what the subcommittee is. So I, I thought it was kind of our bridge to, you know, creating a plan to go forward because of the past evaluation and, and things that we were looking for, for this coming year and kind of making that, you know, I thought it had to do with that process, but, but now I'm hearing something totally different. So I don't, what was the genesis of this subcommittee? Like where did it come from?
Well, I think it may be some conversations between Patty and the former chair.
Okay. Was there any more information about what it was more?
That might be something that, you know, perhaps Beth could, Beth and I and Patty could chat about what the specific responsibilities would be and come up with a, a more specific list of duties. So in, in the description here, again, establishing the timeline, providing some initial feedback on the annual plan, working to make sure that that mid-cycle review is done so that there's ongoing formative feedback and then to compile, it could be sort of merely compile that and the cycle portion of the evaluation. So that's, it may be something that you just wanna take some time on and figure out the duties on.
Maybe we table it and then, well, is there a rush to table it for our next meeting? Just to come back with exactly what the subcommittee is going to be doing? Or do you want it assigned now? I mean, I still agree that, you know, all these subcommittees should have, you know, there's benefit to having two older and, and one new, but I, I just, I'm trying to get a sense of what the subcommittee is.
Can I just, I don't know, forgive me, I don't know what everybody else does for a living, but this description on, that's on our paper here, that's what I do. Except I do it for teachers and assistant principals and not a superintendent. So I'm gonna guess that the thing you're talking about is something that I work with every single day, because that's what we do. That's how you run a school. And that's what I've been doing. So although I'm new to this committee, I'm not new to this process.
So, okay.
And I'll take the, and I'm not saying that we would, I'm not even suggesting that we would ignore the data from the previous year. We take the data from the previous year and then you make the plan. So having been part of creating your report or the data from last year, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, so here, here's my thought on this. Why don't, for the sake of consistency, because we have two very, what I would call meaty subcommittees, finance and policy, and we're establishing a precedence with two veteran members and a new member. Why don't Karen and I just go ahead and become the, the lead on that? And I certainly don't wanna discount Bronwyn for volunteering for anything, but Ryan, you also seem to have a lot of skill set in terms of this particular subcommittee. And again, Melanie, I don't know how you feel. I'm just saying, if you wanna keep it consistent with the chair and the vice chair and then once we establish that, we can go ahead and meet with Patty and Marty and flesh out some of the more specific details of this subcommittee, if that makes sense. I'm hearing a lot from the older members.
I don't have, I don't take issue with either of them being on there. I just don't feel that they should be the majority.
Okay.
On the committee in terms of school committee members.
And do you have any preference for, for Karen and I being, or did you have an interest in this?
Well, I'm, I'm totally happy for you two to be on it, but I would also volunteer if that didn't work for you and your schedule.
Okay.
I'd be happy to.
And then finally.
I have no problem.
Okay, okay. And Stephanie?
I'm comfortable with Ryan going on there, too. I think his background will be an asset to this. And I do think like having the two older ones, you know, would be great. And I would request that our next meeting, though, come back. Maybe you can meet between now and then and come back, so I know exactly what to expect from the subcommittee. That would be awesome.
I think that's, that's a good way to approach it. And Marty, you'd said you were flexible either way. Have we been doing motions on each of these or are we just taking the volunteers and establishing?
You don't have.
You don't need to. So, so we'll say Karen and myself and Ryan for the evaluation subcommittee. And in the interim between now and our next meeting, we will meet with Marty and Patty and put some more substance into the, the subcommittee description. Is that fair?
Sounds good.
That would be great.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. I think, I think, like I said, I think you do have a, a strong skill set as far as bringing something, what you would bring to that subcommittee. And there's plenty more to go around, so don't feel like there's not more to volunteer for.
Yeah, just procedurally, so when we do get a third person, do we just pull from what we've been assigned? Because it looks like we're gonna be assigning all these, which I'm fine doing that, but we are gonna get a third person. So at that point, do we just relinquish some of the responsibilities?
Yeah, I think there are some committees on here that won't, definitely don't meet as frequently. And we, the, the top three, the big three, I think it's important to establish tonight. And then we can certainly assign the smaller ones. And then moving forward, I think we will have some committees that will meet in an, in an ad hoc capacity. So once we bring another member on board, we can go ahead and, and do a little bit of reorganizing. I'm reluctant to like change the whole thing once we kind of establish it, but we can bring, like for instance, I may stay on negotiations until all of the units are settled, but that's something I'd be happy to give up in at that time when we have another person. I certainly don't want all of the burden to fall on Bronwyn and Ryan to pick up the smaller committees. So I think that's realistic. As much as we can flesh out tonight, then I think we can plug in and make some minor tweaking as the months go on, if that makes sense.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah. So we'll move on to the tax ceiling task force. Since Michelle and Russ were on that and they're not really here to give a description, I don't, you know, Tom, I'm looking at you.
I'm, I'll.
But Stephanie, jump in.
It's fine. I'm happy. They're gonna be so happy to have me.
We're happy.
Oh, I thought you were giving the description. You are volunteering for this committee. Okay, and I believe two members is adequate, correct, Marty?
Yeah.
Like for this?
Yeah.
And the description is pretty self-explanatory. I think it's the one time a month and it's in regard to the 25 per thousand tax ceiling in town. So it, it's a nice collaboration of pulling people from different boards so that we all have some good information to bring back to our various committees. I don't know the timeframe on when they meet. Is it mostly evening?
They've been doing late afternoons once a month. So it's a, really to develop strategies and recommendations relating to the $25 ceiling and identify ways to potentially contain costs or enhance revenue or seek legislative solutions to that $25 cap, so.
And you don't need a strong background in finance to serve. Don't be intimidated.
Like four o'clock?
They've been meeting four, five in that neighborhood, yeah.
And then do you also, okay, so you don't need to meet separately with select board, like, like finance does and all of that?
And there's citizen representatives, the municipal unions are represented, the L E A is represented. So it's supposed to be a cross-section of town stakeholders to talk.
But do you need to on that?
They, you need to, yeah. That was the way they, that was the way they set that up. So two, there's two select board members and two school committee members. And that's, it's.
And how often are you meeting? What do you foresee in terms of, how far have you gotten and how far do you see?
I think, I see it still being once a month for the foreseeable future. I don't know if there's any plan to meet over the summer. I suspect it'll, you know, maybe it'll, it'll be September before they resurrect it. Have they said anything?
They haven't said anything. We do have a meeting, I think it was the 26th, four o'clock is the next scheduled meeting.
So any takers on our tax ceiling task force? Or maybe?
If you don't have anyone, I.
Or Melanie, let's think about maybe.
That or the food service. I'm just trying to like look at the whole big picture here.
I'm also thinking that might be a role that a seventh member can pick up.
The tax.
If they're, if they're interested. I mean, we can go ahead and do some shifting there.
Yeah.
If, if you find it's something that you're not particularly.
Like I said, I would do that or food service. So if somebody else doesn't wanna do food service. So I don't know if you wanna look at these all as kind of a whole or not.
Well, that's the next one.
Might be of issue for me because of what I mentioned before. That's, that's not, is it the Wednesday? The 26th is Wednesday or Thursday?
Uh, Tuesday.
See, that's not Tuesday. Yeah, so that, that I would maybe not be here for that meeting.
Four o'clock.
But if you can't make it, you can't make it, right?
Right.
Right, right.
I mean, if you can't make it, you can go.
Yeah.
Right, okay, so, well, do that at food service. I'll leave it at that. And see if anybody else has what, what they have interested in the remaining, remaining three. I don't wanna assume anything or hog anything, but that's where my interest would lie. Do that with food service.
So it, I, I'm hearing that maybe we can just move on unless there's any, anyone else at, at the last 11th hour here who wants to jump on the tax ceiling. Otherwise, we can open it up when we get a seventh committee member and see if they would be willing. But for the purposes of moving the meeting along, we can say Stephanie as one and we'll leave a question mark as our number two. And if we need to revisit it, we will revisit, we will revisit it. And then we'll move on to food service advisory, which is only one member. And I am hearing, Melanie, that you would like.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
No one else wants it.
Is there anyone else that is expressing any interest in the food service advisory committee? Okay, it's all yours, Melanie.
Well, there you go.
Easy enough. Negotiations, I will stay on that committee just for consistency purposes. That makes the most sense to carry those units to completion. And then we can revisit that perhaps in the fall. Negotiations for the newer members, we are in a negotiation year. So this is a, a committee that definitely ebbs and flows. So coming off a very busy year, I anticipate the next two years would be a pretty light workload for this committee. And it's typically one person. You would work with Tom Mazza and Marty on the negotiating team to ratify the, the contracts for all of the units in our district. And Marty, you can add to that.
Yeah, no, well said. With the, with the schedule that we're looking at, I suspect if we can't pin down dates this summer to continue with the negotiations for the other units, it looks like we would be into September. So September could be a busy season for whoever is representing the committee on the negotiations subcommittee, unless Beth continues on through September. Once, once the contracts are settled, there's virtually be, you know, unless there's some issue that unexpectedly pops up, it will be dormant.
Right.
Could I ask for clarification? Can I ask for clarification?
Sure.
So you're not starting over again, like, last year where it was like a, you're continuing, and so you expect it to be most, the bulk of it done in September?
So we settled, we settled with Unit A teachers, and so now there's the other bargaining units, the custodial unit, their professionals, the nurses, et cetera. So we are hoping to have some sessions this summer, but if we can't get it done, then it looks like we'll, we'll be into September to finish negotiating with those units.
So it won't go into, like, it did May this year, June?
I would hope not.
Like, it's not the same?
The hope would be that we settle, that we settle things, you know, in the early part of the next school year, if not, if not soon.
Sounds like early, busy the early part of the year and then done, okay.
Yeah. It's not unheard of to have some of the units carry over. So I would say if there is anyone interested in being on the negotiating team, it might be helpful if anyone wants to volunteer to come on board now, and I can kind of guide them through some of the process. Or we can finish it out clean for the year and then have you come on in the fall. But that's another one that if, if we, if we move forward and I stay on with the other units, this is probably something that we don't need to decide tonight, because we simply wouldn't be negotiating, like Marty said, unless something came up and we could bring it up at a meeting. Melanie?
I also don't want you to take on too much. I know what the chair role is, and you're on, you're, you know, you're on evaluation committee and negotiation, just to make sure that you feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm anticipating that the units that follow behind Unit A, I think, are not as time-intensive, is my understanding. And we're looking to maybe stack some of those units and discuss at once, so, but that's, that's pretty much up in the air, because we haven't even really had our first meeting yet, so who knows how that will go.
Okay.
But. Anyone interested as of tonight?
I'm interested in it, but I don't want to take your spot at the moment.
Okay.
Because I think it's very logical for the person who's been doing all that work so far to finish it.
Okay.
But if it goes into the next year, then we would look at it, and I'd be happy to then, then be a part of it. But I'd want you to do it, and if I can go and watch and just be there, then I would do that. But I wouldn't want to take your spot at this point.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. So why don't we go ahead and put Ryan in for negotiations, and then I can keep you in the loop as far as how, what's, if that's good with you, Marty?
Yes, just for clarity, you'll handle any June meetings or summer meetings?
Correct.
And then if it were to continue into September, would, would it, would then the torch be passed, or would you stick with it at that point, or to be determined?
I think I would stick with it, but bring, bring Brian in, oh, sorry, Ryan in, to just be a witness to how the process works and, and kind of get your, your feet wet.
I would like that, yeah.
Okay. So we'll work it that way. And then high school start time task force?
So it, so this is technically not a subcommittee. It wasn't set up as a subcommittee of the school committee. So this is a, a task force of stakeholders, parents, students, teachers, the LEA is represented. And so the committee had agreed to have one school committee member represent the school committee on that task force. So it's a meeting that I lead. I'm anticipating that we will meet monthly. I think that it will be an activity that'll carry through with the 18, 19 school year, probably into the 19, 20 school year. There's a, there's a lot of work in front of us in terms of research and outreach and communication to the community, et cetera, et cetera. So roughly, we were thinking about monthly meetings beginning in September.
Bronwyn, question or interest?
I'm interested in that. I've done some research on this already, just with some other high schools that I've been at, that have looked at it, not as formally as Long Meadow, but, and also being a high school teacher for so long, that's interesting to me, for sure.
Yeah, I, I think, well said. I think you would be an asset to that committee, and that's a nice way to get into the workload of the school committee and something that you're, you know, passionate about. Anybody else have any other interest? Otherwise, Bronwyn, that will be all yours. Excellent. We have some other potential ad hoc committee representation, and these are as needed. Marty, you want to speak to the middle school working group for this year?
Yeah, middle school working group. So we have an SOI in place with the Mass School Building Authority, and so I don't anticipate that the middle school working group would need to meet until at least December. And I think the committee, the working group would probably come back together if we were successful in our application to the MSBA. So there wouldn't be any activity associated with this particular committee until December at the earliest. And Diane, if you can help me out, was this set up as a subcommittee of the school committee? Did we post these meetings? It was, these were posted public meetings? Okay.
Thank you, Marty. Do we have any interest in the middle school working group?
When did they, when were those meetings? Were they night or day?
Daytime, I think, for the most part, yeah. But that would be, I think, you know, frankly, if, if we were successful with an application, you'd probably, I'd be at a point where you're putting together a building committee. So this might be a moot point, as I think about it.
I think we could probably sit on this one.
Yeah. Everyone good with that? Yeah, makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. We already established payroll clerk and warrants.
Clerk.
Oh, we didn't do?
Yeah, not clerk.
Oh, we, we came back to that, right? We're circling back to clerk now, because that's our vacancy.
Go to job for the new person.
Okay.
Yes.
Melanie?
Pitch the clerk.
Well, I mean, it's just that I did it all year, I would do it again. I mean, there's nothing hard about it. She does all the work. She does, she does all the work. It's just a matter of, again, there's some people, I've seen clerks sit here and not take one note over the years, not, not make one note, and, and be fine, you know, with Diane, with what Diane says. Your name is just on it as clerk, but you have no other, you know, it has to be approved by everyone, so it's not like it has great responsibility in terms of what's said, but of course, we want them to be as.
And at the end of the day, like you said earlier, everybody has a responsibility to review the minutes and, you know, approve the minutes.
Yeah, it really is, it's not, it's, I mean.
You were very thorough.
I am thorough. I'm detail-oriented. I really took copious amounts of notes, and I added things to Diane's, and I looked for feedback if I wasn't certain about things, but that's how I do things. So I probably made more work than there was, but, but what I'm saying, you're sitting here anyway, you might, may have to take some notes, but, I mean, look, I've jotted down tons of notes, because that's what I do. And it's maybe, and it takes maybe an hour to review the open executive notes. You just kind of compare, kind of just look, oh, did she cover everything? Did she miss anything? So it's not that, it's not a complicated job, it's just that I, I've done it, I'm just kind of tired of doing it, or I would do it again. There's no reason not to do it, it's just one more thing.
Right. Diane?
And Diane, honestly, she had surgery this year and was out for.
Hopefully, we won't have that.
It was out for a little bit, otherwise Diane is the most reliable, responsible.
The only thing I would like to add, that would be a role of the clerk, is if the chair or the vice chair were not present at a meeting, you would be running a meeting. So whoever does it would have that very rare instance. I think it's happened once in my time.
A backup to the backup?
Yeah.
Yes. Well said, Melanie. I think you've done a phenomenal job as our clerk this year, like, above and beyond. You've, you've done a great job, and Diane is invaluable to us, so you guys were a great team, I will say. Excellent job. That being said, we still need a clerk at our meetings. It can't be me.
Can't be me.
It's gonna be like Bueller, anyone? Anyone?
Could I just ask if you have, like, reservations, or you just feel like the time, like, you've got enough on your plate? Like, is there any feedback as to why?
I'm just, I, in all honesty, I'm with the policy and the LPDEC board and the high school task force, I think I'll be.
Yeah, I mean, there definitely is a lot to cover. That's, that's definitely an issue. When you, when you look at it, and it's like, everyone has their plates full, and there's no doubt.
But in all honesty, Melanie made a joke about it, but should we?
Right.
Leave something for the next member?
We can certainly, if someone would like to volunteer and be a clerk until we bring in and appoint our new member, we can look at it as a, I mean, then I guess we're saying, you know, if you're looking to join the school committee, you are becoming the clerk. But we can revisit it so that we can fill the void for a little bit, yeah?
Yeah, I, I think it's important to be assigned now, because somebody needs to be responsible for that.
Right.
Because we might not have someone until the end of the summer, so we need to have somebody in there. But I'm, I'm absolutely with you that someone needs to come in and take, ease up the load. They can take one from, from everybody, potentially. I mean, it definitely, it's overwhelming. It's, there's an overwhelming number of committees and work to be done, and I've lived it, and I, I hear you. But someone needs to do it until we.
I'll do it.
Figure out.
So Stephanie, you'll do it, and we'll revisit it once a new member is appointed. We can always come back to that, but as long as. Okay, so I think we have, if anyone would like to read. Do we have a motion on the clerk at the beginning?
I, I move that the school committee appoint Stephanie Jasmine as clerk of the school committee for the 2018, 2018 year.
Second? Any further discussion or comments on that?
I'll just say, if you meet in the summer, it'll be tough for me for a chunk of time.
And I'm certainly happy to be a backup to anybody. I've done it before, I know what I'm doing. I'm happy to be backup for anyone, I just, I just.
Would we need to appoint Diane a clerk, or we would just let someone fill that role?
Usually what happens is if the clerk is not present, I take the notes and I send them to the chair, and the chair reviews them.
Okay.
It's even better.
You're not off the hook. I'm kidding.
You know I'm kidding.
I know. It's totally fine. We all pitch in, and we'll all get the work done. That's the bottom line.
Absolutely.
So we had, so I'll call for the vote, then? All those in favor?
Thanks, Steph.
Anyone oppose, or abstain?
I'll be here for you, Carly.
I abstain.
And I did volunteer last year. I raised my hand right up and volunteered.
You did, you did.
It's not, it's not anything that I regret.
No, and it, you jump in, you just jump in and get your feet wet, and, and that's what you do. But I do appreciate everyone stepping up to the plate and filling. You do work hard here, and it's great to be able to spread all that out onto a team. So Karen, remind me if I've forgotten, or Marty, remind me if I've forgotten any of these subcommittees as we've moved through them. I think we covered everything. And we'll just discuss the school committee vacancy, correct?
Oh, no, and the SEAL.
Oh, SEAL.
The school reps, yeah.
How did I miss that?
It's on a, it's, the sheet, Ron?
The sheet.
Oh, oh, correct, correct, correct. I must jump into the next item. All right, so the discussion of the following appointments or possibly discontinuing them. So the first is the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, the acronym known as SEAL. And I don't, should I just read the description, or is anyone who's been on SEAL want to give some update on that?
I can speak to this, if you want.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
I think what needs to happen is that a conversation needs to maybe occur with SEAL to find out what would be most beneficial. Maybe having a rep here so that it's seen as kind of a contact person. I mean, obviously, they're, they're welcome to contact the whole school committee, but I think whoever does it, I think it would be beneficial, I guess what I'm saying, is to contact SEAL and find out what kind of, what would be most helpful for them. You know, if they want you sitting in their meetings, I don't, I don't know, but maybe more of that bridge between them and the school committee. But regardless, I think that conversation would probably need to be had, so it can be an effective position.
Melanie?
Karen, were you SEAL representative this year, and what was your involvement? And does it vary from year to year, depending on the chair?
So I was, I was listed as the rep, but I was not getting informed of when the meetings were, so I would find out either after a meeting occurred, or like, the morning of. So it sort of fell on Stephanie, because she was there at the meeting. She was one of the board members of SEAL, so she sort of just took over as.
Because it was, it made, oh, because I, technically it wasn't, but I was there, so I just said what they were doing. But I think it needs to be someone outside of that, and then a communication with the president of SEAL to find out how we can, you know, make that work, yeah.
Karen?
Can I make a suggestion that, for both SEAL and the school reps, that we sort of use this less as a you are supposed to attend every single meeting of, of both the PTO or a SEAL, whatever you get assigned to, and more of like what Stephanie said, which is a point person? So, you know, you attend meetings as needed. If they request your presence at a meeting, you, you know, you make every attempt to get to the meeting, and sort of reach out to whoever the president of either the PTO or SEAL is, and ask them, you know, what information would you like? Do you have any questions? Would you like me to attend a meeting? Something a little bit less formal than you're expected to be at every single meeting, because, you know, as the new members can see, we have a lot of things that we need to attend, a lot of meetings we need to attend, a lot of, and this is just, it sort of starts to feel a little bit overwhelming, like, you almost have a meeting every single night. So I think those would be better as a point person. And so you have contact with the president, and they can ask you any questions, and less so as like a required attendance at every, every meeting.
That makes sense. Did you have your hand up, Ryan?
Nope.
Oh, sorry.
Just grabbed it.
Just got a glimpse. So a point, I'm hearing a point person for SEAL, and then point, individual point people for each of the schools in the district, and treat them both kind of the same. And Stephanie, are you saying we should hold off on a point person for SEAL until we actually talk to them, or go ahead and assign that?
No, I think a point person, but just kind of redefining what it is for, for them and also for the school, that, you know.
And leaving it up to the point person to touch base with the SEAL?
Yeah, same with when you're a school rep, you know, maybe it's the PTO.
Stephanie, what does SEAL make generally, or?
So they were usually, they were the first Tuesday of every month. Whether that continues for next year or what next year looks like, I don't know.
And it was evening.
And it was evening.
Anyone have any interest in being the point?
Well, if you have six schools and one SEAL rep, that's seven people, so you could sort of almost do it randomly, or, or where your children are, perhaps, you want to avoid that, but.
Well, I don't, I, my, I'm at the high school, I go to the PAC meetings. It's certainly easy enough for me to be a point person, because I'm at all the meetings. And I don't, I know you have two high schoolers. Do you have other children?
One at Williams.
Williams, okay.
So does it make sense, then, why don't we skip over SEAL and kind of talk about the point person at each of the schools, and then we can come back to SEAL? Okay? Just listing all the elementaries.
I like your idea of just having someone to, if somebody wants to contact, they can look and see who to contact. You don't, like you said, you don't have to go to all the meetings.
Right. So I think the flexibility of, so we're talking about the school reps, and just to give you the background, each of us, we were assigned to a, a school in the district, and you touch base and go to the PTO or the PAC meeting, and you're the person. It, it's a nice way to have all of us involved with the different schools and, and be up to date with what's going on, and then there's a person for parents to reach out to, or the PAC or PTO president, and bring any issues forward to the school committee. So it's a nice bridge between the community and the schools. Just to give you the background on that. But moving forward, I would agree that because of the workload, make of it as you want. Be the person with the contact information, but don't feel obligated to go to every meeting. Obviously, maybe do it, you know, whenever, based on an agenda item or however you want to work it. But I do think it's an important role for us to continue in terms of being present in our different schools. So we'll just, I guess, open it up and go through the elementaries. Blueberry?
Yeah, I'll take, my son goes there, so.
Bronwyn will go ahead and, and certainly if you don't feel comfortable in your child's own school, don't feel obligated that you have to pick that. Center?
I'll take center.
Okay. And then Wolfswamp?
I'll do Wolfswamp.
Okay, thank you. Glenbrook?
Because my son's at Williams, can I do Glenbrook?
Absolutely, yeah. Ryan? And then Melanie, did you want to stay at the high school?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Because I was Williams last year and even though I don't have kids there anymore, I do enjoy that relationship with Williams, so I will continue on there. And Melanie? And then we can come back and with a new member flesh out the SEAL as a point person.
I would just, if somebody can just assign, and it's just, yeah, just have somebody, I would have somebody down.
Okay.
I think whatever you do at the schools, you should be a SEAL.
But anybody here tonight want, have any interest in that?
I can be the point person.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I meant, I was just saying if the new person who comes on is interested, would you be willing to? Or do you want to keep that for the year? I was just opening it up to like be flexible in case you didn't want to do it.
Why don't I take it, because the new person's gonna want to have some.
I think everything can be up in the air.
Yeah, I feel like, if the new person wants to take center and I keep SEAL, I mean, I'm gonna be at the center of PTO meetings anyway, but I'm happy to, you know, whatever.
We can be flexible with that as we move down the road with that. So did that cover all of, we got through all of our committees and our appointments? So moving. Oh, sorry.
I just want to point out that not on this list is your Metco liaison, who is Stephanie.
Oh, correct.
And I'm imagining you want to stay there.
I do want to stay on that. And I also wanted to ask about the Wellness Committee because we don't have anyone on there. And I don't know if anyone's interested, but I am definitely interested in being on that.
How did we miss those two?
Yeah, I don't know about.
Totally missed them.
I guess first to deal with the Metco, Diane, do we need a motion to appoint Stephanie? We just keep her?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the Wellness Committee, I don't know if Tom would want to give background on that or Sue? Sorry.
Well, I think it depends on which Wellness Committee we're talking about. There are a couple really. There's one that really relates to policy and looking at the wellness policy and that has to be revamped, I think it's actually past company revamped. So there's that piece of it. And then we have a wellness, you know, kind of committee for school members and we meet. I think we decided we'd meet between four and six times next year.
There's a Wellness Policy Committee?
Not yet, there needs to be.
Is there a policy, though?
Yes, there's a policy.
But is it just to talk about our policy?
It's bigger than that.
Yeah, I think under the Child Nutrition Act of whichever year, I'm not sure, they required us to establish a wellness policy with specific parameters in the makeup of the committee. Nurses need to be present, parents, students. It's supposed to be looked at every three years and there's supposed to be an assessment on how the policy is working. So that is something I think that Sue was alluding to, that we're probably at a point where we need to reconvene. Well, it's probably been about three years, so we're probably at a point where we need to reconvene a formal Wellness Policy Committee that meets the guidelines and the regulations.
It's a prescribed committee, it's got specific members and specific tasks.
So that's not, I think I would, although that is very interesting.
We'd be happy to add you to it.
You did a bad job selling that.
No, I would be willing to be on that, but that sounds like it is already, that's prescribed, that's not.
School committee representation will certainly would be required.
Oh, I'll be on that.
Well, I get it.
But I would, I just wanted to, is this the same one that is referred to in the KDA handbook? Because when I was looking through the KDA handbook, it talked about a Wellness Committee and it said there was a school committee member that should be part of it.
That's what I thought.
That's the nutrition.
That's the one you're talking about.
So our Wellness Committee that Sue runs.
It's not an additional committee, it's a Wellness Team.
Is it just, I've got to look at that. Is it just specific to nutrition or is it overall social, emotional, all of that?
Exercise.
Wait a minute.
Marty, do you want to finish your point?
That's right up her.
I think we're talking about, I think we're talking about, Stephanie's question was in relation to the committee that's required by law, correct?
There's two going on here. So the one that's nutrition is that just.
It talks about physical activity, does not talk about social, emotional. So I think the policy's on our website and find it. Talks about what's allowed to be sold during school time and.
Well, anything, I think that both of those, and I don't know how often they meet, but I'd be interested in both of them.
I tried to give the required one to Sue, also under the Wellness Group.
But you gave it there.
So I think Marty wants to.
I think we have to have the two because I think the team that Sue heads up is really focused on instructional practice and the things that are happening on a daily basis in our schools. And so we'd be happy to have a school committee liaison to that committee as well.
Is that the one that you refer to as the W team?
Yes, yes. And I think they're both, I mean, from what I'm saying, they're both very much related. So I would be interested in doing both because I think that if you're creating a policy, it has to, you want info on both, sorry Sue, but I do see them both.
We know how to read each other here.
The W team is not so excited about the wellness policy, let's put it that way. The team looks at like really non-academic indicators, right, of success and those kinds of things. Anxiety, stress and all kinds of things that have nothing to do with English and math and some studies in science. So we didn't want to put upon the wellness policy, you know, upon this particular group of people, but I did mention it a lot, I tried to sell it really hard the last meeting we had.
I think we should keep them separate, really.
You know, some people might agree to be on, from one committee might agree to be on the other committee also, but I'm not sure. So, but they're two distinct kind of, yeah.
I think we keep them separate because it's the, the group that Tom's talking about, it's really almost bureaucratic, its policies being responsive to federal requirements. And then Sue's team is just a really super engaged group of educators and.
Really excited about what's good for kids.
Which one's more exciting? I can't tell.
The W team is way more exciting.
You have the fun name.
I think Sue should be trying to both of it.
I think that's how it's gonna work, I don't mind saying it right now, but.
Is it my understanding that the one, Marty, that Tom is talking about that's bureaucratic is we are required to have an appointment and Sue's is more of a liaison?
Correct.
And everybody knows after last year, policy is not super fun, exciting. But that's not something that would fall back into policy then, like, no.
Sue's group would not necessarily.
Somebody from that group might want to volunteer for the other one.
Last year, last year's Sue's group, just giving you some examples, it was a group that took a lot, I look at the need for movement equipment. It was a group that put together sort of a position statement on how to reduce anxiety and.
Stress in the classroom.
Stress in the classroom.
Looked at grit, intensity.
I guess what I was clarifying is doesn't involve the policy subcommittee? That's what I was asking.
No, but any changes to the wellness policy would have to be approved by the school committee.
Okay, but it's not, they're not gonna work on it in policy subcommittee?
Policy subcommittee if we wanted to. That was not the way it was handled when it was established and reviewed three, four years ago.
I tried to get it to go back to that, though, I'm gonna be honest. Nobody was biting.
So we need two people right now.
So we need two people then, a liaison and a.
You need one, you may have two.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the requirements for the Wellness Committee, I'll have to look more at that.
But can I ask Tom a question?
Yes, Stephanie, go ahead.
So that policy is not a school committee policy, though?
It is a school committee policy.
So it would have to be, it would have to go to policy with any changes?
Or, like I said, it came through this other subcommittee that was designated for the Wellness Policy.
So you just bring it to the law committee?
Because there is specific requirements of who has to be present on this subcommittee.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, yeah, well, yeah.
Which one were you interested in then, Stephanie?
I would do both, I would do both.
Okay, okay. So Stephanie? Thank you.
But you'll have to tell me when you.
I'll put you on the Wellness Committee.
So Stephanie, you have Wellness Committee and Metco.
So it's W team.
You actually have a committee.
W team, W team.
Does she get a fun shirt and like a cape?
I feel like I want, I mean, Sue, you're really good at telling that. I feel like I want to be on that team. You're not so good at telling yours.
Elizabeth Bone actually stayed another year, like passed, she came all last year.
Really?
Because she was our liaison and she just kept coming, so.
So you held out on us and kept the fun committee till the end?
Yeah, kept it soft and yet, Sam.
All right, so. Anyone have anything else that we overlooked in terms of appointments or committees? It seems like we were able to be successful with fleshing all of this out tonight. So I'm grateful to everyone. Karen?
Diane, do we need a motion for the committee that Tom was talking about?
No, no.
That one, no, okay.
And Melanie?
It might be more than one.
Question?
No, no, that's okay. So just in terms of updating this, does somebody want to update it? Or should I add those, the Metco and the Wellness, the things that I forgot? I didn't get on there. Because I think this is helpful to keep from year to year.
Oh, yeah, I think this is a great document to keep.
I missed the Metco and the Wellness and what else did I miss?
I can add it.
You can, okay. You want to add it right now?
Yep. As we speak.
And then Diane, do we get the updated, a list of everyone? How did that work?
One of the things I mentioned was you didn't fill out the subcommittee. If you want to pull it out, pull it out. I can't remember if it was.
The High School Task Force.
So that would go like an appointment?
It's really an appointment.
Okay, yeah, go ahead and move that around. Please.
And I, you know, at the risk of adding to, you know, the committees that you're talking about, there's also, as things pop up, and I guess you referenced this in terms of the ad hoc committees, you know, there's, it's conceivable you could have technology committees or curriculum committees or facility committees. And, you know, so there's a range of issues that you could conceivably tackle if issues come forward.
And Marty, if you'll maybe just take like discussion of continuation and go ahead and put them as either a point person or however you want to word that, now that it's been discussed, you can take discussion off. Thank you.
So we'll move into discussion of the school committee vacancy. Marty, did you want to just read that or did you want to talk about the procedure?
So Diane was helpful as always pulling together the school committee policies that relate to this topic. And most relevant is policy BBBE, which requires that if there's a vacancy in the committee, that you have to notify the select board within 30 days. And your policy also says that once the position has been posted for seven days, the select board and the school committee share in the responsibility for filling it after that seven day sort of posting period. And for folks watching at home who might be curious, once this vacancy is filled jointly by the school committee and the select board, it would be a position for someone to serve for the remainder of Jess Hudgens' term. So it would take, it would carry, the appointment would take someone until June of 2019. So your policy, that your policy, it doesn't, your policy nor the law nor the charter really provides specific information on how the decision is made. It just simply says that the select board and school committee would jointly make the decision. I had sent to you the language from the town charter, which indicates that the vacancy has to be posted to the town bulletin board for 15 days. So sort of the more conservative approach might be to make notice to the public that there is a position available. You could wait the 15 days and then there would have to be, the school committee and select board would have to come together to review potential applicants and then make a decision. The select board has this on their agenda for June 18th. It might be good, I won't be out of town unfortunately, but it might be good to have the school committee represented at that meeting just to hear that discussion and provide any feedback from your discussion here tonight. So in terms of the joint meeting, conceivably you could look at July 2nd when there is a select board meeting already scheduled, July 16th when there is a select board meeting already scheduled, or you could find another date entirely. Or you could find a date that lines up with a future meeting of the school committee. So that's up for discussion. I'd say it might be productive to have a meeting, let's say, of Stephen Crane, select board chair, myself and Beth as your chair, just to figure out the logistics of this. So it's going to require some coordination in terms of finding a meeting date and determining how the vote happens. I think, you know, there was a process that was agreed upon years ago between the select board and the school committee when there were two vacancies and it was a very detailed voting process that the select board and the school committee had agreed upon. It may not need to be that sort of complicated. It could just be the boards come together and then there's a majority vote. But that is sort of to be determined. So the charter, your policy, the law is silent on how the decision's made, it's simply, but what's clear is that the select board and the school committee would have to come together to make that determination after a posting period of either seven days or 15 days. But I think the 15 day posting is probably the, sort of the two week posting period is probably a better way to, better way to go. So I don't know if all that makes sense, but I'm happy to try to answer some questions based on the information that I have about this, but I know some of you have obviously been doing your own homework on this as well, so.
And we'll be new to this, Melanie. So even set aside like the decision process, the application process is always also not written in stone? In other words, somebody fill out an application, are they interviewed, are they? But is that not written in stone either?
The town has, and Diane and Tom may have some better information on this, the town has a process for filling vacancies. They have an application form, it's very, very simple. Doesn't require resumes or, you know, reference letters or anything like that. I think it's a pretty simple application process. Yeah, it's a statement of interest, I suppose. And then, you know, conceivably you could have one meeting where the applicants are reviewed and interviewed and then perhaps another meeting to make a decision. You know, more ambitiously, you could do it all in one night. And I suppose that maybe it depends on the number of applicants you get. You know, if you get one applicant, it's one path forward. If you get 10 applicants, that might be more involved, so. Sure, after all the discussion, while the subcommittee worked tonight, you're gonna get a pile of applicants running the other way, maybe.
Maybe they're not watching. Any other comments or questions for Marty or Tom or anyone on how that process works? Thank you, Marty and Diane, for pulling that information together so that we had background from our own policy, but the charter as well and mass general law. So thank you for that. So that will be an ongoing agenda item, I would assume.
Is it possible to have school committee representation at the select board meeting on the 18th?
That would be this coming Monday.
Yeah.
And at 7:00.
And also, as you're thinking about that, Diane drafted a letter that I think you probably would need to review tonight and perhaps approve for release. And this is a letter to the select board formally notifying them that you have a vacancy. So that draft letter is in your packet under Agenda Item 12. So it would probably be good for you tonight to send some signal to the select board in terms of this letter or when you hope to meet with them jointly or how we might work through the process here. And if it would be helpful, we could set up a meeting with Stephen Crane and the select board chair and a representative from the committee. You know, that could just be a working meeting, it wouldn't have to be posted or anything, but it could just be a working meeting to talk this through on behalf of the two boards, so.
That'd be before the meeting?
I think that, you know, that's a thought. I mean, that's, you know, you would do that.
That'd be helpful.
You could potentially, well, I don't know if we can pull that off before the meeting on the 18th.
It leaves tomorrow.
Today? 14, 15?
I don't think we'll pull together a weekend meeting.
Yeah.
Are they just having a general discussion like we're having a general? Are, are they just having a general discussion, like we're having a general discussion on the 18th?
Yes. Yeah, that, that's my understanding. I, I, I'm not sure what direction their, you know, discussion will go.
I can be present for that, whoever wants to join, but I definitely.
I may join you. I may join you as well.
Okay, we will have representation there then, definitely, and open it up to whoever would like to attend on Monday evening at seven.
Do you, um, do you want to think tonight about potential joint meeting dates, whether it be, um, well, that your meeting on the 28th would be too soon probably, uh, but you might have summer meeting dates where you want to do this jointly. It might, it might be good just to talk right now, to give the select board some feedback on when a, when a, some potential joint meeting dates might be. I know that's.
It is helpful.
Cause that's.
It'll, it'll help guide the discussion and try to narrow it down.
So we would have to coordinate summer's schedules?
So for your consideration, like, so for example, would July 2 or July 16 work? Those are already posted as select board meeting dates. Alternatively, you could, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, go finish, finish.
Alternatively, tie it to one of your meeting dates, but you haven't set up a summer schedule yet, so that's the only difficulty there.
What were your thoughts, Karen?
I was just gonna say, um, would it be easier to do one of those doodle polls that we do with Diane to poll some dates together that might work for everybody? You know, I mean, we could include the 2nd, the 16th and whatever dates, we don't have any, we don't have any summer dates on there.
Your, your committee, we haven't established summer dates yet, unless you want to, I mean, maybe that's the first discussion is when you want to meet over the summer.
Yeah.
That might guide when you meet jointly with the select board.
I know, just cause I know the summer gets difficult with everybody's vacation time.
Right. I think that's a good idea, instead of trying to pull everyone's summer availability together tonight, that we do the doodle poll and try to find some commonality there in dates, does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, because again, is it, is it gonna be by a vote and do you need quorum? How many need to be there? Is it gonna be, you know, there are so many unknowns with that, so if you can't be here, do you just not have, do you just postpone it until everyone can be there in September? You know, like, if, if people have, we have too many difficulties in July and August.
Right, so far we just have the 2nd and the 16th thrown out as July dates, correct?
Yeah, again, based on select board schedule, so, I mean, would those work? Or do you want to, you want to just do it with the doodle poll and, and are you saying a doodle poll just at this group or of the, of both boards or what's your?
I think maybe first we find out when we're available.
Okay.
And then approach the select board with dates that might be able to work for us.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Does that make sense?
I think that makes sense. My feeling would be that, especially for something this important, it would be a day that we can all make it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't think it should just be a quorum, I think it should be.
Yeah, I, I think so too, I mean, it's.
Yeah, so I think a doodle poll is the easiest way to figure out whether or not.
100%.
Right.
You know.
I know it's hard for people to start thinking about like July and August right here tonight, so I think the poll has worked really well for us in the past and you, for the newer members, you just plug in the dates that work for you and then Diane will compile it and, and give us the.
Chair, you can see what each other are available. Well, I, I would suggest that you decide on a notice letter.
Okay.
Because, I mean, you don't have to give potential dates for meeting, however, the select board will not post the vacancy until they get your notice letter. Even though they know it, um, they're gonna wait for your notice letter, then they'll post the vacancy and for however long, the seven or 15 days, and then you can interview. So that puts your dates out a bit. But if we can settle on a notice letter to them, get them noticed, we'll get it posted.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
What's the timeframe from the notice to the posting?
That they have to get it posted?
Yeah.
I don't know that.
Does it have to go on agenda?
I don't believe so.
There's no specific time, from what I, Mark had said that in, in the policy, there's no specific time between when we post it, or when we give them notice, when they post it, I think there's a timeframe, I want to say.
They only have so much time.
Yeah.
I don't have that.
But then when we conduct the interviews and that, there's no timeframe between then. I just worry because of summer, I want to make sure that there's no timeframe between posting and when we have to interview.
Right.
You're, yeah, there, I think 15 days will have had to pass, I think that's sort of typically the town practice anyways, is they, they post, they post vacancies on committees for a couple of weeks. So from the time it's posted, add 15 days to that. Unless you want, again, your policy is a little tighter, your policy says it's either seven or 10 days, I forget, but it's, it's less than 15, so.
I still want to post it and then have this long delay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just don't know if we should wait to, because it's summer and technically, you know, we meet a little bit, but I don't know who's around and I wouldn't want to have interviews without all of us here, so I don't know if we should, when we post it.
Should we do an additional doodle poll for our summer meetings then, or?
I doubt that's what you were asking me to do, to get suggested dates for summer meetings. I'll talk to, um, Marty and, as to when they think you might need summer meetings too. Cause now with the warrants being signed with it outside of a meeting, I don't know how often you need to meet during the summer.
Yeah, I mean, at least, I mean, we haven't really talked much about it, but I, you know, you're gonna need probably one in case there's any staffing adjustments, um, so that might be a July meeting and then as the school year approaches, maybe have another meeting in August just to make sure that everything's ready to go. So you, you know, I think that's reasonable, one July, one August meeting, but it's obviously entirely up to the committee if you feel like there's some work you want to get done and you'd rather meet more frequently over the summer, uh.
No, I think that's completely reasonable, one a month.
Fourth Tuesday in August or something, start.
I'm sorry, the what?
If you did the fourth Tuesday in August, that would get you on track for the first Tuesday and, or second Tuesday.
End of August, definitely, second Tuesday in September.
And we.
It would just, right.
Start the rotation that day, yeah.
It would start it, yeah.
And we should be mindful this year to not repeat last year and have a school committee meeting the night before the first day of school. We want to avoid that at all costs this year.
Okay.
So, so we will, um, keep that in mind, but I think it's best to create the poll and we'll all, keep in mind that one meeting in July and one meeting in August would be fair and send, fill out the poll accordingly about your summer availability.
So is that gonna be for the meeting with the select board or just like separately?
That will be for the school committee.
But it could.
First, but then we could try to coordinate.
Like they, they could come to one of our meetings or we could go there, so we have there, we know they're on the 2nd and the 16th.
Right.
But if it was our second meeting and they were able to come to us, we would work them into our agenda.
So if we didn't meet until like, let's say July 16th or something, then they had to post it for three weeks, it would seem like kind of late, I don't know.
Unless you put, unless you get it posted, unless you want to post it sooner, so the select board could, I don't know if they need to vote on Monday night to post the position. Yeah, my guess would be that they would. But is that, is that what you want as a committee? Do you want that position posted, follow, you know, so once you make notice to the select board, is it your hope that they then post that position? And then, you know, seek a, just, just generally, just trying to establish a general target, would you be looking at it potentially a July joint meeting with the select board? Or is it too early to?
Stephanie?
I'm thinking that we need some more information from the select board about what they see as happening once that is posted, cause I think we do run into the summer where it is gonna be hard to have everybody here. So maybe at that next meeting where you're there, um, or you could meet with, um, the chair of the select board and I think it's a process that you can work out with the chair of the select board and then come back to us maybe the next meeting and we can decide what we want to do.
Right, at our end of June meeting?
Yeah.
If we can get the doodle poll out and get the results maybe, you know, quick for even, and then in the interim, Marty and I can try to schedule that meeting with Stephen Crane and the select board chair and try to flesh out some of these details and get a better understanding of how the process works and, I know it's a tough time of year, so to get a better idea of the timeframe over the summer.
Yep.
So that we're well within the law, but that we're also not setting ourselves up for failure where we don't have enough people to meet to, to interview this person. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Melanie?
I totally agree, I think, um, it's kind of irrespective of, even if they do need to go ahead and post it, I know you might have a gap in time, but I think it would, say they post it and they get the names, it, it, they may just have to wait a month.
Right.
Before we can meet in August, because we're pretty much all assured to be back here for that last week of August, I would think, if, if that's something we can all agree upon. I mean, my, my July, this is what I was saying, my July's still a little fluid, so I, I don't know that I can give you dates right now in July. I'll do the best, but I, I think it's gonna be hard to rely on a July date, but maybe not.
So we'll set a target for one meeting in July, one in August, and in the meantime, Marty and I will sit down with, try to coordinate a meeting with, um, Stephen and the select board chair, and then when we get reconvened at our next meeting, we'll have more details.
Sounds good.
Okay.
That works.
Now, we do have an executive session scheduled for this evening, planned for tonight, um, so I'll read the recommended motion. I move that the school committee meet an executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy, strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units B, C, D, E, F, and H, and consideration of release of our executive session minutes from previous meetings, and the purpose not to reconvene into open session, this motion does require a roll call vote.
Second.
We'll start with you, Bronwyn.
Bronwyn Monahan, aye.
Melanie Bronstein, aye.
Beth Baron, aye.
Karen Moran, aye.
Stephanie Jasmine, aye.
Ryan Kelly, aye.